Darryl Berry, Betty Ward Cooper, Jennifer Hanglin, Brenda Shelley, and Bill Wilson, members of the Monroe City School Board, have successfully received and exceeded to six hours of prior training as mandated by the Legislature of Louisiana. And all board members have fulfilled the mandate of one hour of ethics trainings for the year of 2024. And the certificates are provided in I, the undersigned Superintendent of Monroe City School District, do hereby certify that the above and foregoing is a true copy of the resolution adopted at its regular school board meeting on January the 21st, 2025. And we recognize those school board members. Darryl Berry. Mr. David Ward Cooper. Hey, Mom. Ms. Brenda Shelley. Thank you so much for your service in our schools.
Continuing, Ben, we're at a consent agenda segment.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as planned.
All right, it's been moved as second that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Madam President, before we take the vote, I think we have somebody to speak on one of those items. Just write that to your level.
Thank you. Thank you. I see the list. Four A, four J, or is it four H?
Four H and J.
Okay, four H and J, all right, and Hill 6B. And also, Eddie Kreiser. Yes, I agree. Okay, thank you. The first one is on the just right reader. Make sure the mic is on and speak into it, please. Is it on now? Hello? Uh, no, yes. Thank you. Just wanting to, um, sounds like a good program, but wanted to understand the decodable text. Um, and it says in the second paragraph of the sole source, "All of our decodables can be customized to meet the future adapt and ability of the school and the students." So does that mean that the little booklets are not, we don't just go by them, they will be created for our district?
So for just right reader, we're required to have a parental involvement budget. This will go to the parents who students, um, come to those parental involvement nights, and they will get decodable text. It actually looks like this. I provided a small sample of what they will get. They get this package. They've also agreed to a package of customized backpacks, uh, as well as a, um, a quick video that the superintendent will create as a greeting that will go before those parental involvement nights. This will support our label schools as required by the state.
And how will it be implemented?
This will be implemented utilizing our parental involvement act for our label schools as required by the state.
So if, and will it just go to the schools that are in, excuse me, in urgent need of intervention?
C I R, U I R, school sites, those label school sites.
Okay. What about the schools that are on, on your mark?
That's two different questions.
Well, will they participate in the program?
Some of those are label schools, so yes, they will get those.
So, so all of those schools, okay. That, that was what I, what I wanted to know. Thank you very much. All right, on the, what was the next one? J. That is the E I S. Um, who do we currently collect Medicare from? Medicare funding? We started this when we were on the board, remember Brenda? I just wondered. Because we collect Medicare funding.
That information we will get for these questions.
Okay. So did we do an R F P for this?
Not my office.
Not your office. And I just wondered since they, according to the, um, first, the funds agreement, the fee base is 10% on everything. E I S shall receive a fee based on proceeds and at least each morning related services, nursing, direct services, special ed transportation, 10%, behavioral health, personal care services, or medical services. And I just wanted to compare where we were today as to where we, you know, are currently.
If you want to ask some questions to follow up on Ms. Kreiser's questions about this E I S contract, because I, um, this came up to me, uh, to sign last week. And, um, I had reached out to Mr. Lawrence because I hadn't seen this. I didn't really know where this came from, who went through, and what it's really about. Can you give us more information on this, Superintendent Moore?
Yes, uh, well, that, that, that came from our I D A, uh, Ms. Rochelle Williams. Uh, and when I asked about that particular contract, she said, "This is something that we signed, I think it's on a three-year basis." And in previous years, it had been gone before, uh, the board. But this year, it come before the board. And, uh, Mr. Lawrence was looking at that contract to make the necessary adjustments before we bring it forward.
Mr. Lawrence, what can you share with us regarding, uh, four J?
Yes, ma'am. In my deep dive on this, what I found out was this company is a company that processes Medicaid billing reimbursement. Uh, I heard mention about transportation services, especially these students, uh, some of the other allied health services and professions, uh, that, that, that we provide. Apparently, the problem is we leave the money on the tables because we have school nurses, we have all these things that they're providing services to our students. To some degree, we can submit, uh, request Medicaid and get reimbursed for a lot of that cost just as a hospital would, just as a doctor's office would already. So this is a matter of understanding, as I take it, that we don't have the expertise in-house like a hospital would to do that, we would to do a, to do Medicaid billing. And it's very precise. You don't want to get it wrong. So this is a matter of using, uh, third-party providers to do the billing so that we can get reimbursed for the medical, medically-related services that we're providing to students. And as I've heard some of you say, there's a, a 10% cost. I have said in the executive summary, this is Hanglin and I have talked, uh, where I feel like there's some elements of this that we need to cover that deal with, uh, cybersecurity, data breach, uh, obligations, some other things that I made a list. And this sort of been in the executive summary, where I think we need to work through that before we finalize anything. But it's understood, you're going to prove this, but it's going to be subject to our making sure that we have all those i's dotted, all those t's crossed.
Will it be our insurance committee that we assign this to or by some other committee?
Madam President, it is my pleasure. If you want it to go to, maybe that's fine. I don't know if there's time sensitivity, but it is. If you want it to come back to the full order or if you want it to, whatever you want, you just let us know.
Madam President, I have a question about this. Um, Mr. Lawrence, on, um, page five, section 4.5, it says compensation upon termination. It says upon termination of this agreement for any reason, E I S shall be entitled to receive the compensation set forth in paragraph 4.1. So then when I look at 4.1, um, it points to, I mean, 4.1.1 points to those 10% fees. Is that, I'm a little confused about what compensation means. Does it just mean further collection of bills? Or is there some other compensation that isn't clearly specified in 4.1?
I too share your concern. I felt that there was, there was a lack of precision in certain areas dealing with billing and how to deal with termination. Uh, for, for example, we're talking about when you got to give me three months' advance notices. I was like, wait a minute, I might be terminated this right now if you engage to cross.
Okay, so I would like to pull this contract out of the consent agenda, um, and vote on it separately. I personally am not comfortable with agreeing, um, putting my vote toward a contract that has some holes in it that needs to be further negotiated through our legal representation with this organization. Um, and would like a little bit more information on the background of this particular organization and ensure that they're following HIPAA compliance. Of course, it does say that they will follow all federal and state law, and anybody dealing with Medicaid information is required to follow those HIPAA, um, standards. But it's still like, uh, our.
And for.
Right, that's right. And that, yeah. And it was vague, and it said federal and state. But, um, if we could, that would be my recommendation. Can we pull that up for separate consideration, Madam President?
Yes, we can do that. All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. One, if you would, just let me, one comment is that Brad Bojron down there in that ridge, I looked it up, and he's one of that set of people. So it would be nice to know who is in charge of our Medicare program right now? Is it within-house? And to compare the two. Thank you. All right.
Do I need to make a motion? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to pull out item four J and put it at 5A for separate consideration.
All right, it's been moved as second that we pull four J and move it to 5A for separate consideration. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Here and now, motion passes. So we had a motion as second of the consent agenda. Just haven't voted on.
You did.
Didn't vote it on?
No, we didn't. No, we took questions for the consent agenda.
All right, so we'll have to vote now. All in favor, approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed, nay. Here and now, consent agenda is approved. All right, moving to the third, we are at the consent items for separate consideration. And we vote 5A, which is J, four J. Approve the E I S contract for a contract of services.
Okay, I make a, no, no, I do not make a motion.
You make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table, uh, item 5A, until more information is obtained and till our attorney can negotiate the contract.
Do we have a deadline on this? What is it?
Um, I'm working on it now, but we already have a contract, so we can't be late. Well, it can't be under contract because the board has not approved the contract. So, um, so it's overdue, but it needs to go through proper channels. Superintendent, we've got to make sure we get on top of these contracts. I know that was something that I had asked for last year. We need that, the ongoing list to ensure that these things don't compromise services for our students or schools.
So Dr. Haran, what, what, if it's not approved now, what happens?
That's students with disabilities, so it's not my department, but it is, it's been a rolling, as Tony Moore stated, it's been a rolling contract. So it's been set in place for numerous years.
So this has been the same thing that we've been doing for years?
For a decade, for at least 10 years.
Well, and according to what we have in front of us, this is a contract for billing, not for services. So the services will still continue. This is, this is billing.
But that's, it's been the same thing for the same.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean that it's a good contract.
No, no, I'm just answering his question. He was asking what it, it would just mean that we would have to.
I mean, we have several contracts in Monroe City schools that have not been properly vetted for years. So it's, I believe it's incumbent upon the board to ensure that contracts are sound and protect our district.
So at what point in time do we lose, uh, compensation, services, or whatever because of our tardiness? Is there a drop dead date?
Again, that would be Ms. Rochelle Williams. I can reach out to her and find out and get that to Mr. Moore first thing tomorrow morning.
Yeah, because if we're already late, you know, we need to get this thing done postface.
That would be my guidance, but again, that's not my.
And I, and I wouldn't mind voting on the superintendent and president and vice president approving it's subject to it being validated and verified in order to expedite the process. If that's what the board so wills. So I'll make that as a motion.
I already made a motion, and it was seconded. Um, but the contract does say July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Michelle just pointed it out to me.
So it's not past due?
Right.
Why, why, why was it said it was past due?
I think because we're currently already.
And the new three-year contract is not passed?
It starts July 1, 2, and 25.
And that's the case, that's fine.
Okay, so the motion was to table?
Yes.
It's moved as second that we table 5A, the approval of the E I S contract for contracted services. All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Here and now, motion passes.
It does need to be brought back next month if at all possible. We will.
All right. At this time, the report of our superintendent.
Okay, uh, greetings, everyone. Uh, of course, Ms. Ivana, uh, Howard, our chief financial officer is not present today. Uh, she's with her mom who, uh, just recently had surgery. Uh, so that's what she's, uh, why she's asked for this particular meeting. Uh, November 24th, only for the general fund, uh, and sales taxes for January for this meeting. General fund revenue was slightly more than the prior year, $675,000. The district currently has an increase in salaries and benefits of $1.1 million, uh, in part due to the following. The salaries and benefits that were in ESER grants ended 9/30/2024. The L D O E restructuring of some grants, uh, requested, uh, being added salaries and benefits to be moved from that to our general fund. Our sales tax totals, tax revenue received, uh, November 2024 for September of 2024 collections decreased by 5.96%, uh, a total of $188,000. Also, November sales tax supplement checks were distributed November 15th of 2024. 1968 sales tax revenues have an overall total decrease of $6,000, which is 0.10% less than the prior year overall. 1994 sales tax revenue have an over, overall decrease of $500, which is almost right even from the prior year. Our 2001 sales tax revenues have an approximate increase of $104,000, which is 2.64% more than the prior year. Uh, the deadline for the ESER reimbursements was Monday, uh, December 16th of 2024. Uh, the one-on-one training of principals is continuing. And also, um, the audit report for June 30th, 2024 was submitted by the 12/31/2024 deadline. We are waiting for final approval from the legislative auditors. And also, just as a side note, the legislative auditors are continuing to request documentation and information related to our student activity funds. Uh, also, in reference to our Salley Omo project, uh, it was budgeted, uh, $1.5 million, uh, because of the time deadline, uh, to come out of our general fund. Uh, we were able to get, uh, several invoices in prior to that deadline, and it looks like we will come in slightly under $900,000, uh, which will be a difference of about $600,000 uh, in, in our expected, uh, overage in that area. Also, I, thank you, sir. Uh, Dr. Watson is your president. Dr. Watson, I'll let him speak as well, uh, because he's had several meetings, uh, with our, with our building supervisors in reference to, um, creating our lockdown policy, which we will be submitting to our policy committee as well as working on transportation policy, uh, that we will be submitting, uh, to our policy committee. And also our fixed contract, which is the electronic, uh, ticketing system. And because of his, his great work that he's done as our chief operation officer, uh, I would not take a reference to our, like, Dr. Watson, if you'd like to add and bring forward continued updating in this area.
We didn't ever want any. Like, like the superintendent said, we had several things that we've been looking at under our offices at this particular time. Remember, the building supervisors outline a system of checks and balances. We've seen with the weather changing as it has, we need to have a system in place. You know, we've been kind of doing things just however it happens. No one's ever had any procedures and phone calls. It's just been this cold outside, full check in school now. But they don't have a system by saying, hey, step one, step two, step three. So we'd like to have phone calls in place to make sure those things go the right way and keep our campuses visible throughout the year. We've had, at certain campuses, if you notice, there are certain campuses where, I guess, the lawn crews do not mow on the campuses. I think Mr. Wilson alluded to that in the last meeting. We talked about Neville High School. But Neville High School, they don't really use their lawn mowers. That's why they have a professional service coming out, doing some things. So we talked to them, I talked specifically to Neville's building supervisor and explained to him that we will mow his campus like everybody else's building supervisor mows their campuses to ensure that we keep our campuses unified throughout the year.
Dr. Watson, who, or Mr. Wilson, I don't know who, who's the professional service that mowed in Neville?
I forgot the name of the company that they've contracted with. They've done that over the last couple of years. And the story we had, the story we got was that, well, because of all the other duties that janitorial staff and all had at Neville because of the size, yada, 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 they didn't have time to fully mow and all, but they did mow in some areas, this is what we were told, but couldn't get the whole school. And so as a result, this other company was hired to get the whole school.
That's cool, but my question is, was that somebody hired by Napa or the school district?
No, that was the school itself.
So the school district was doing this?
Uh, Neville High School. Uh, it's my understanding that Neville High School hired that, but I could be wrong, it could have been Napa, but I don't know for sure.
Next, we're talking about the lockdown policy. Again, we did not have any policy in place. So we've had several instances throughout the school year where we've had to go out to campuses and spoken to Mr. Moore. At that time, we sat down with Mr. Dr. Bush, Mr. Marquette Marshall, who's also Monroe City Police Department and developed a policy that we submitted. We'll have it ready for you by the next meeting. We'll hold.
Okay, we need to have a, get that to the policy committee chair so they can go through committee first.
Yeah, that is something we're.
She got one.
Right.
Yeah, we're waiting on that.
That's what we're waiting on. Also, a new transportation policy. We have a old policy that's actually about 40 years old. It hadn't been touched. As I reviewed the policy, there were several holes in the policy that we need to look at. I think it will serve us well to go ahead and look at those things now. I have a, again, I have a policy written. We will submit this and use it as a possibility.
Uh, yes, uh, Dr. Watson, appreciate the report. So for the last three years, I've been trying to go, go through Mr. Monroe, and then last year had asked the board for, uh, help with J S Clark. They've had so many things that are in need. What can we do to address that? I mean, we've had functions there, and it's embarrassing as to the condition of that, those facilities there.
You got to look through facility first.
And they have, but I mean.
No, we didn't, because before the, uh, the Salley Omo project, I, I, when I voted, I can remember like yesterday, I said, "Make sure we try to do something for J S Clark." J S Clark has doors, they have.
You know, I mean, yeah, and I, and I sent a note to our board in reference to that, uh, beginning of last year, just, you know, evidencing everything. So if we need to take it to facilities again or what have you, so maybe whoever, so whoever is the facilities head that's going to be appointed within the next month, please, please, let's put J S Clark at the top of that list because we're all over J S Clark, okay?
We were waiting on the, um, the audit from your department to give us an audit to prioritize what needs to be done because just because we, somebody's spoken out about J S doesn't mean that there aren't higher priorities. We need to know and prioritize that list. So we do need that as soon as.
That is underway. He's going to report.
How far out do you think that will be? You're going to do it today?
He's reporting that. Look, I have a list. That's, if, if, if it would help me to kind of go down this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was trying to, yeah, it's something I need to.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, so next.
Before you continue, I need to ask you this. You do have an online submission for, for all of these needs, right? Where they can.
It's all that submission for. So it says like.
To report their problems and what's needed.
Yeah, we never had.
Because I thought you were planning to develop.
Yes, yes, ma'am, that's.
Okay.
So that's the transportation part. So now we're at the fixed contract. So now we do have a contract that we received from the fixed company. I'll be ready to submit that to you. That's our online system that we're talking about. So once we get it in place, I guess we'll send that on to you so we can approve or approve that contract.
And that fixed, that did go through facilities. That was, uh, a school board member, Mike Sacramero, brought that to us and Dr. Watson and Darren DeCoy have worked on that to get that system in place for us.
So what are we waiting on? It, it is in process of being put in place, or is it still the action?
We're waiting for the board to approve the contract.
So went through facilities, but didn't come to the board?
Right, there's a contract that's not going.
Is the contract ready? Okay, so can we get that at the next board meeting?
Next, the risk of these systems are underway. We started at Watson High School. We'll be at Carroll on Thursday. We'll complete the high schools first because they have some larger needs. Once we complete the, uh, high schools, we'll move to low schools and also elementary schools. No questions? You guys have another risk?
I'm not waiting till you're done.
No, 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 I was asking, is, is I go through and I kind of just address each one.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, child nutrition services. Like I said, child nutrition services, the audit is underway. Our answer from director, Ms. Warren Shaw, under her, uh, direction, they were, the department's been following all the regulations. And we've also expanded our real options, using, I guess, more or less utilizing some of the extra private funds. We had a lot of funds that had not been used over the years that have been kind of sitting to the side, but we've been. Over the last, I'll just kind of give them out. Ms. Kreiser, she gave me a call probably about a month ago and said, "Dr. Watson, we have an office of about $50,000 that we've not used and spent there for about two years." At that point, we started making calls and figuring that out. And I guess to my, I guess my manager, and also to our students, we've been able to, we've been able to have some meals that our kids really enjoy. We've expanded our real selection. And my thing is the, I guess the person that speaks that we're going to get from the services department, I wanted us to kind of put away those bags. I don't want to see our kids eating burritos out of the bags, you know, chicken out of the bags, things like that. Our kids deserve to have full meals. And I think our, I guess our cafeteria department, our managers are excited about cooking real meals on a daily basis.
Thank you for so much food that's getting thrown away. It's, it's, uh.
So I saw that Ms. Shaw was, um, changed from manager to acting supervisor. She's, she's, that's interim, you said?
Yes, yes, you are correct.
Interim?
Yes, good.
Oh, okay. Is there a timeline for when you're going to make her permanent?
Yes, we're, we're, we're giving her the opportunities. It's been a system that almost do that day. So we're seeing how she's working out. And if it continues to progress the way it is right now, I'm working closer to Dr. Watson by the end of this year.
I see, okay. And did you say any of that money was going to be used for the cafeteria updates? Because I know Ms. Temple had brought that to us, and Neville had acknowledged that they haven't had an update, I think, in 60 years or something crazy. Probably.
Not that many, that money's allocated.
30 years, maybe?
Yeah. That money couldn't be allocated to wars, facilities, just for proof.
Ah, I see, I see, okay. Where did the money go that Ms. Temple had identified for those upgrades?
Well, it actually went through the grounds. That's the vendor that we use to purchase security.
No, the.
See something, uh, uh, when, when, when Ms. Temple was here,
I see something, uh, uh, when, when, when Ms. Temple was here, she had started a process over cafeteria. We're talking about cafeteria.
It's still there.
Pardon me?
It's still there, it hasn't gone anywhere.
Okay, are we, or what is the plan, I guess, from moving forward so you don't lose that money, so we can get those cafeteria upgrades?
Let's go ahead and follow it up, so we're moving, we're processing, we're.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's still.
Yes, we won't drop. It's always been dropped before, we don't plan on dropping it.
Any more questions, uh, for Mr. Harrington?
We have a couple more. Yes, a couple more things.
Couple things to update you on. Couple, just a couple more things. As far as our current projects right now, we talked about the Sally Almo project is near completion. The MLK Outdoor Learning Center, that's either, you've seen construction going up there. Homeland Security, uh, doing security cameras, they've started that. They completed the wiring here at the central office, also the market fault. And they're working on Carroll and Watson, that's what we speak. So if you go around those campuses, you'll see them putting wires throughout there. If you look at the contract that we had for them, we added additional security. So the primary purpose is to make sure that you walk around the campus, you can't get, no one should move someone. So if you walk from the front hallway around the campus, it should look quality and secure enough. We're also looking at lighting around these campuses, to make sure that lighting is there for the safety and security of all of our students in, you know, just anybody else that still comes on campus. Uh, the last piece is our RAV panic button system. We've been using that for a while for most of our.
Why is it?
RAV panic button. So if something happens on campus, the RAV, if something happens on campus, they should have used that button to alert people about things. We really haven't been using that to as close as possible. So we've called in some other vendors and looked at what they've been doing, but since RAV is free, we want to make sure that we give everyone a chance, so we've reminded our principals to make sure that they're using that button to find out where we are with it, so we can assess what we're using now before we go into something that will cause issues.
Insert monocular ray has another meaning, but that's okay.
Yeah.
One of the things you brought up was about the heating, um, and cooling, and I want to applaud, applaud you, because, uh, I have, uh, two students who walked into Neville and said it was so excruciatingly hot in their first, their first period today that it was uncomfortable. So clearly, they did their job and got the school warmed up for this morning, but, uh, we might need to teach them moderation in the schools. What does that?
Well, I can tell you, what, what happened is we put it in manual, right, because we knew the temperature.
Yeah.
To just ensure that, that we wouldn't have an allergy like we actually did have, uh, at one of our campuses.
Yeah, I, I chuckle, because I have to laugh at teenagers when you complain no matter what, so. Um, but I did want to say, I know I've driven by, um, and just because I, Neville's on Marax on Sixth Street, I drive by a lot, and there, the lights in the gymnasium are on frequently when nobody's there, like all of the lights. And I know some of them we have set on.
Is that the gym?
Uh, inside the gym, we had a new one. Um, and I know some of them are set on timers, but they do have switch overrides on some of them that, that won't go off, like in the gyms. And I know that, because I've been in there and I've messed with them. Um, so we just need to make sure, there's a lot, we spend a lot on electricity in our schools, so just want to make sure that we, again, this is developing these policies and stuff like that, like some kind of, I don't, I don't even know how you address that, because it's whoever's using the gym, making sure they turn off this way. But just wanted to mention it, because it's a lot of lights, at least they're LED in the gym, but just fine.
Most of the time, they have, they all know who's in the gym.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean, it's small, small potatoes, but it's.
Was it anything else that you wanted?
One thing, when we talk about, even, I think we spoke about this, I think we're gonna install a two pipe system, so the cost of that, because we, I know it's been recommended time and time again over the years, but the cost is not gonna go in there. So if we continue to kind of kick it down the road, eventually it'll get to a point, and this is something that's gonna be an issue, because like you said, the heat, at certain schools, I've known it, I go to every school in the district, and I walk through the schools, and I'm talking about, at seven o'clock in the morning, it's unbearable, because we have to set it in a certain area for the, you know, system to kick off. So I think eventually we need to look at it whenever there's a time when money's built before those things, we definitely need to look at that. Once you turn that heat on, it's on. Like I told you when I said they're reported, it takes about four hours to turn that system on and off. When you think about it, if you try to turn it off at seven o'clock in the morning, it's lunch before, you're getting a relief. And if kids are there that day, it's excruciatingly hot, excruciatingly hot, it'll be for you today.
It'll be on that list of prioritized needs and how we're gonna attack these.
One of those things, that's a issue, I think, and we should use, as a lot of actual funding.
Any further comments for, uh, Dr. Harrington? Any further comments?
And, and the, uh, the last, uh, part of my, my report, uh, I just want to say, uh, publicly to our, to our faculty and staff, and to our district leaderships there, uh, to thank them for their support in moving our district in a positive direction.
All right, at this time.
I signed up to speak on finance.
Six, six B? Yes. All right, so, you wanna come on up?
Thank you. Thank you. Now, I want to thank Mr. Moore. It was so wonderful to see this many financial reports, so that you, the board, made it has grown since five, and you know exactly where you are. Um, I want to say, I'm on your side, and want to, want to tell you that, um, with Mr. Harrington, what a wonderful addition you have made. Uh, I happened to be in that room at a meeting with Mike Strain, and that's where I heard about the farm to table, is what the grant was called. And they asked me, man, why hasn't Monroe City spent theirs? And so that's how I found out about it. Came right back, did a little research, and talked, I called and he graciously answered the financing, I'm on it right now. The dollar, they're at fifty thousand dollars that's just sitting there that we would have lost. No different than when we've had Carl Perkins' funds, okay? So I want.
A pinch, Vicki.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, when we're there, we have to share, share knowledge, and that's what it's all about. But we have five, it's in your budget book, but the computer science grant needs to be added to your budget. And I asked you to please, as you're board, our policy, our policy states that you revise the budget quarterly. And many of these, several of these funds were not issued out when Ms. Howard did the budget. So you need to come back. We have an education excellence fund, it's two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's on your page one forty-eight of your book, but, um, so you need to look at that. And, and I don't believe, at that time, there was zero, so that's another three hundred thousand to add to your budget. You've got high dosage tutoring, you've got EDA set aside, and that is a separate fund. So if you go to the dashboard for EGMS, you can see where your money is being spent. This is in federal dollars. And then you have a state, which is the early childhood in LA four. And it would be wonderful if y'all were looking at all of your finances, and you see, so that when one's budget has not been spent, then you can go and ask Mr. Moore and say, Mr. Moore, would you please find out? We don't want to lose this money. He's been great about Carl Perkins' there on it, even though your records are two months kind of behind. But you, as the board, can request, what have you got up to date? What are the expenses? What are the reimbursements that we've had? And, um, I had a question, have we, on finance, have we received all the electric buses?
Oh, but, but Watson, who's?
Two more, though.
We have two remaining.
Yeah, we have thirteen.
We have two, they're two remaining buses.
Okay, two of those.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, the other thing is, we do have a policy that all grants need to come before the board, so that you know what yours.
That some of them turn around.
Yeah, but what is, what is your response to that? When I say you, what are you submitting to the district? So that you have all that information. Ms. Shelling and I have served on that committee in most years, and we reviewed all of it. And then, whether it's how I want to talk to you, thank you.
Madam President, if you would, real quickly, uh, the computer science grant is thirty-five thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars. Uh, the computer science grant funds were just released, and I have not, uh, obtained final approval for spending, has application for spending was just completed on January the fourteenth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, the educational excellence, that actual amount is two hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars. Educational excellence fund EF, EEF, was reported during the budget overview that required board approval. And also, Dr. Harrington spoke on that, this fund, um, is, is, uh, sourced, uh, is pending, uh, as it could be eliminated if House Bill five is approved. Uh, and, and so there, and high dosage tutoring, that amount for the state was three hundred eighty-four thousand, uh, twelve dollars. And the curriculum committee and the school board approved this funding item. Uh, the fund will be paid, and that was for Onya Mark, uh, whose services would exhaust the entire budget. Uh, previous, uh, chief, uh, academic officer, Ms. Serena White selected this company, uh, and right now, I have Attorney Lawrence looking at, because when she submitted that you approved that, it called for paying up the entire six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And I have subsequently sent, went, asked, uh, Mr. Lawrence to review that, because the company, proud of California and different areas, uh, because that's not the way we actually do business, and to try to renegotiate that, to pay them after the first semester half, and the other half after the second semester. Uh, the idea they set aside is actually seventy-three thousand four hundred and seven dollars, and that's, that, that money is spent to support professional development through baby, uh, educational, uh, group. Uh, and, and that was to answer your questions you're speaking to.
I know, I, I've used to make your questions, and I forgot redesign, which is four hundred thirty-eight thousand.
Four hundred thirty-eight thousand, the United District Budget Book, but it reflects, uh, P three section of the budget. However, there are funds allocated, P five totaled one hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars, and the funds in P five offset the total of five hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars, which includes indirect costs, the indirect cost, uh, for this budget, uh, totaled approximately sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. All right.
And also, there was a hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-four, this budget for NIT, uh, and the remainder of the funding is for three hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and three dollars textbook to support Great Minds and Body Bridges, and forty-one thousand seven seventy-one was for the writing revolution, and that was to train thirty-nine educators.
Mr. Harrington, where can we get at our next meeting a summary of the, uh, curriculum costs that we've incurred for this, uh, not calendar fiscal year?
Yes, and, and, and thank you, uh, that's something I, I'm also sharing with our news, uh, chief academic officer, that's something that we're gonna provide, we're gonna provide for you.
Great, thank you.
Because we are looking at, uh, what's been spent over these past several years, and looking at, we're gonna look at data and see if we're not getting, returning our investment, then we're not going to use those programs.
All right. Sixty. For the report members, so, like.
No report. Oh, I'm sorry. Congratulations to you all. Congratulations. And thank y'all for being here also, as always, and as always, to have y'all here for supporting and information to be able to provide to the board.
Do you have a report? Right?
I'm done, thank you.
Um, yeah, I wanted to acknowledge departure of senior, uh, senior Serena White, um, who was our chief academic officer. Um, she served Monroe City Schools for over twelve years, um, and put a lot of time and dedication into our district. Um, she has moved on to another position, but, um, I just felt like we'd be remiss for not acknowledging her departure and thanking her for her hard work, um, in, in everything she's done for our district. Also, um, wanted to, uh, acknowledge that, uh, is something I, I forgot to, um, state last week when we discussed the Neville charter application, that we did have a significant faculty, um, percentage who voted in favor of the charter, and I think it's very important for us to, uh, really reach out to our faculty, not just at Neville, but at other schools, to identify where is their lack of confidence, and what do they see as needed changes? I know that I've heard something that you're already working on, and that's just trying to, you know, get materials, or trying to, you know, get something fixed at a school that it is, it's just a black hole, uh, requests are made and nothing happens. Um, so I know that that's, that's one piece of it. Um, so I know some of that's being worked on, but I would like us to make a deliberate effort to identify, um, why, why staff have lost confidence in our system as it exists today. Um, and then, uh, also, just wanted to identify, um, one thing that I didn't acknowledge last week as well. I was very dismayed by the threats that were made, that if this board did not vote in favor of the charter, that we would somehow be damaging our system. It is up to the Charter Association whether they want to damage our, our community and our system. So if they choose to go to Bestie and get some other type of charter, uh, approval, that's on them. That is not on this board. This board voted based on what information we had in front of us, at least, that's what I believe. Um, I chose to not vote one way or the other, because I asked for changes to be made and for them to come back next year. But that, and that was my prerogative, but, um, I, I, I just felt like that needed to be stated, that, um, we are about, uh, you know, we have a superintendent who's been in place for less than a year, um, with a team that has been in place less than a year. And I would like to see what changes, um, they can make, because most of the things the charter board identified they're upset about, um, all happened prior to, to your arrival here. So, um, just felt like I, I wanted to say a couple of things that I think I did not, uh, clearly state last week. And, um, other than that, I thank you for keeping the schools open today. I know a lot of people were hoping for snow, and that didn't happen, um, but I think the more days we have our kids in school, the stronger our students will be, so that is good. Um, and I appreciate you keeping transportation running, so, uh, we don't have kids sitting out waiting for buses too long, um, because tomorrow morning is gonna be quite predictable. Have you identified if you're, we're gonna keep it up and running tomorrow?
Yes, in fact, we had our region, region eight superintendent meet, uh, at, um, Bayou Point, and all our same schools are remaining open on tomorrow.
I saw a couple in the.
Over and out.
Yeah, they have kids in really rough. Okay, so just we implore people, parents, everybody, anybody who's tuning in, um, get those heavy coats on kids, uh, and make sure that they're properly dressed. Um, I even make my kids, make sure they have a coat in a car, because I grew up in Chicago, and you always say, if the car breaks down, you gotta make sure you have something to wear.
That model system that I know the fact you guys about, that car, that is online and something.
Oh, I was gonna ask about that. Wonderful, okay. Thank you, that's it.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I wanted to echo Mrs. Hanlon's comments pertaining to Dr. Serena White. She will be missed, uh, known her for a number of years, uh, which she taught, but then, uh, lead junior high, now Neville Junior High, and has done, has done great work, uh, from an academic standpoint, especially with our school system, and also did a good job serving as co-supervisor superintendent, so we, I wish her the best as well. Um, pertaining to the forensic audit, I made a request to have that added to the agenda this last Wednesday, January fifteenth. It was not added to the agenda, I believe it was about four months ago, when the board voted to proceed with the process of naming, uh, or contracting with an accounting firm to complete the forensic audit. I, I don't know where we stand on that, and I would like to see an update on that, uh, next board meeting if at all possible. I think that's very important, that we be as transparent as possible, and that, uh, we can, you know, see where, uh, we need to make changes. Uh, so I wanted to get that out.
Mr. Wilson, do you know the processes for choosing the auditor in that? Because I think that's where it's spelled out, who, who runs the lead on it.
I do, we can visit on that after the meeting. Um, and then, in closing, uh, Miss Hanlon, uh, you're obviously entitled to your opinion. Uh, I differ on the comments pertaining to the charter. Don't want to get into it. I'll let you speak without interruption, I appreciate the same, uh, thing with you. And so, um.
Probably not.
Um, and so, and for the record, you did not vote last week. You can make all the faces you like, very professional, thank you.
Can I have one last thing, Mr. Cooper? And, and because it was on my list, and I do echo what you said, I do want to thank, uh, Mrs. Serena White, uh, for the work she did, and she did take another opportunity, and we do wish her, uh, the very, the very best, um, for her and her family. And we will have our, I believe our fourth community engagement on the twenty-third, uh, at Miller, uh, Square on Powell Avenue with our partnership with the Housing Authority. Uh, that, that will be the twenty-third, Thursday, and I did send that flyer out to the board. That's it, I sent the flyer out to the boards at the headquarters. Yeah, that's right down from you, there, on Powell. Miller Square, yeah, Miller Square, on Powell. On this Thursday, I sent the flyer out to, to continue our community service partnership with the Monroe Housing Authority.